Are we on? Need him share all set? Uh, good evening. Uh, this is the Needham zoning board of appeals. We have a little echo. We can hear the echo.
That's like a big echo.
A lot of echo. Definitely failed on the tech, but it's okay. So first on our agenda, let's uh review the minutes from the November sixteenth hearing. Has everybody read the minutes as presented? So uh.
Here's a revised version.
In the package. Okay. Uh, so Nick and Howard, myself will vote on uh the next couple hearings that matter. So is there a motion to accept the minute for November? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh. Next on our agenda is the uh application uh continued from the last couple hearings at thirty Wilshire Park, Jeremy and Jessica Carlin. Uh, it was originally continued from October nineteenth. The applicant has a petition to withdraw without prejudice. So is there any discussion on that? Can I entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice?
I'll file a motion to allow the applicant of thirty Wilshire Park to withdraw without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second to that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The application has been withdrawn. Um. That is our seven thirty. The next of seven thirty hearing is an application at four sixty Hillside Avenue Dish Wireless LLC. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, why don't you uh, when you're settled, identify yourself, uh, your address, who you represent or who you are, and uh, we can undertake the application.
Sure. My name is Andrew Goram. I work with network building and consulting, one hundred Apollo Drive, Chelmsford, Mass. We're here on behalf of Dish Wireless LLC uh at four sixty Hillside Ave in Needham. And to give a little bit of context behind what we're doing, this is for cell antennas. I know people hear dish and they sometimes think satellites and TV. This is wireless antennas. So about three and a half years ago, E-Mobile and Sprint merged together to become one company. The FCC allowed this because Dish Wireless said that they were going to step up and become the fourth major carrier and build out their own nationwide network. This site is a part of that network that is currently being built. Uh, and in this particular situation, I believe we had a special permit, we had to apply for the special permit because of the location relative to the parapet.
So let's uh go through your application. Tell us what you want to do. Uh, we'll need some discussion uh from and comments from uh other municipal uh bodies and see if anybody in the uh room or on Zoom has any questions.
Sounds good. So uh for our application, I believe everyone has a copy. Um, so we are essentially planning on placing three antennas, uh, three RRUs, which are remote radio units. And then we're going to run cabling along the building. We're following existing routes with some of the equipment that's already there. Uh, Sprint vacated this particular location previously and we're going to use some of that equipment. So if you notice on the Z one page, we have the zoning drawings. They kind of outline uh the, the building itself and then um, it, everything around that building, the MBTA runs along that. And then the following page, A one gives a visual for what we are proposing. It shows both the existing wireless equipment for the other carriers. And you'll see that in kind of the, the lighter font, if you will, on the, on the edge. And then the, the bolded thicker drawing would be our proposed antennas. So you'll notice that the alpha sector, we're shooting at ten degrees for the azimuth. The sod mounted and then beta and gamma are going to be on the actual roof.
In a sense, uh, how many other providers are on this site and on this building?
T-Mobile, AT&amp;T and Verizon are all currently there.
One thing I did not see in your application, and I had Daphne reach out, is I didn't think, see anything uh compliance with the FCC nor an engineering report.
Right. So the
So those buried into these plans somewhere?
So on the plans on each page, you'll see on the right hand side, a, a blue stamp.
Yep.
That is our engineering stamp certifying these plans and all of the Dish Wireless sites are within FCC compliance. If, if they weren't, they would lose their license and not be able to operate at the, the given frequency of the six hundred megahertz that they own.
So we're in this uh series of documents, would you talk about the FCC, the, the the radio waves, I guess?
We don't have a specific document that mentions it, but if you would like, I can have our RF engineer sign an affidavit certifying that this site is in compliance.
That would be required under our, I think, believe our bylaw. So we would like to have that.
Okay.
And how about the structural integrity uh engineering?
We uh have a full service engineering department and we ran a, a full structural and amount analysis as well.
Where's that certification on these?
Those were not mentioned in the original application that we received. We have them. If you would like a copy, I can send them to you.
Yeah, both of those have to be filed with your applications in this community and most communities, I believe. Some providers put them on your plans. And if they're not copied and I didn't see them, that's why I asked for them.
Okay.
Um, so both are requirements for the issuance of the uh, the permit. Um, I think we probably can, uh, depending upon what happens, uh, approve it subject to submitting those to
Contingent upon receipt.
Yeah, and to the uh board building inspector, but both those are required. Um, so your testimony is that your compliance with all structural requirements uh on the roof, the load, all those things and the FCC uh requirements.
Correct.
Uh, any questions from the board?
Yeah. So, so that it looks like um I noticed that the setback of the roof mounting uh should be ten feet from the building and yours is two point nine feet.
Correct. So
It's which is a, I, I, which is a uh, you need a waiver. So what would be the reason for not bringing it back?
So the reasoning is, as we previously mentioned, it is a crowded rooftop. There are a lot of other carriers there, a lot of equipment, a lot of HVAC units on the roof. Uh, but as is customary, we are trying to co-locate all of those in one location because it's preferential for us to go on a building that already has other carriers as opposed to picking a building that has none. Trying to locate those centrally to minimize any the effects, any public aesthetic views. Um, and just locate that all in the same building as the other carriers, as it's already been established as a
Yes. So in other words, it seems like that it, it should be set ten foot back, which is less visible from the street.
Right. So we
Yours is two point nine, so it's more visible.
So we have to maintain a certain distance from some of the other carriers, just to make sure that there's no interference from their equipment and ours.
So because of the crowded roof and that you needed to prevent uh, uh the, the equipment not working properly, you had to put it much closer to the, the edge of the building.
Correct. But everything is painted to match. Um, you'll see the, the photo simulations that give a pretty good idea of what they're going to actually look like.
Could you just direct us to a particular picture of a lot of them?
Sure. So if you go to page, each page, they'll show the before and after. So if you go to page two and then three, two should show before, three will show after with arrows pointing to the before and after. So the arrows will be what ours, our antennas will look like after they're installed.
So I see on page two, I see two arrows. And, and then what, what are these arrows telling us?
That's our installation.
Like that's
So page one is the front map, the overview.
Throwing on there.
So page one is the overview map. Page two is what it currently shows. As page three is what we will be implementing. And then page four is another view of what currently is shown. Page five is again, what we will be implementing.
So it's like this tower right here is now view. You can see it.
Right. Actually, the arrows are helpful. Otherwise, not, not
You would never know.
See, yeah.
Right. Which I think helps illustrate our point where most people would never even know that they're on there. And then take into account that they're also painted to match and they, they blend the surroundings.
To the site the other day, it's really tucked in the back, uh, in back of the center automotive.
It is. Yes.
Uh, and what, what is the building used for?
It's just an office building as far as I know.
Um, anybody else have a question?
They're going to run through the
Yes.
Okay.
You have a special related to one of the comments. So, okay. You want to ask your question about the comment? You want me to go through the comments first?
Go through the comments.
All right. Uh, fire department had no comment. Uh, public works have no comment. Uh, police department was the only question, is it going to interfere with public safety radio operations?
No.
Perhaps when you have the affidavit on the FCC regs, note that also.
Sure. So the, to explain that a little further, we shoot at a very specific frequency. So it, it will be on a different frequency than what the public radio would be on.
Okay. Um. And the Department of Public Health, uh, basically said, the public health director, please ensure that this additional equipment does not cause any risk of public health or safety or nuisance, as long as the applicant meets all required building zoning fire federal communications. They have no further comment. So let's go to the board of building inspector. Where I think Mr. Ligris probably has uh some comments or questions. So the building inspector said the roof mounted antenna are allowed if not more than ten foot high and are set back a distance from the edge of the roof, at least the distance equal to the heat height. In this case, these antenna are eight foot high, but set back only two point nine feet from the roof edge. Therefore, they're only allowed with the, upon the issuance of a special permit. And roof mounted equipment, not otherwise. So that's why you're here. Correct. And then wall mounted antenna do that do not extend to the above the face of the wall, do not obscure any architectural features and are either concealed behind existing architectural features or painted to match the color of the facade, which is mounted, which you've addressed and shown us. Uh, this one antenna is located in the top of the wall and is proposed to be painted to match the facade. And therefore allowed as a matter of right. Uh, so there's really no other comments except explaining the uh, uh observations and what the bylaw requires. Nick, what did you have?
My question was actually regarding the lease juice.
Okay.
Like not this, this matter, but
It resolved, answered? Okay.
I mean, I would like, as you suggested, something in there in the affidavit from the engineer besides.
So when you or Howard or whoever makes a motion, if there is a motion, put that into the affidavit on FCC compliance. And then we need also the certification on the structural integrity that is required. Um. So those are the comments from uh municipal departments and offices. Anything else uh that come in?
I believe planning board.
I didn't get a, see a planning board.
I only send one because it's the same one for
If you would let me have that, I will take a look at that. Does anybody have a planning board letter? I didn't see it. I don't think we got it this time.
No, it's the first.
Okay. It may be put in with another application. Let's see. Nope. If you have the planning board comments, you want, let me set. All right, let me have.
Here it is.
Thank you. Um, planning board had no comment. So that was a search and uh, that's good. I'm going to borrow that from you, Nick. Um, other anybody here in the public or on Zoom that would like to speak for or opposing this application?
There are no hands raised from the public.
Seeing that, I close the public portion of the hearing and we can deliberate. Uh, any questions, comments? Someone want to make a motion?
Uh, you know, it seems like it's appropriate. Uh, you've addressed the, the setback issue as to why that you were trying to avoid interference with others that that would stood out certainly to the building commissar as well. I, I'd make a motion if there's no further comments.
That's fine. Okay. Nick, any other comments?
No, I think that those, the arrows were very helpful for me to see that even though the setback is impacted, I mean, I, I have no issue.
Okay. Uh, move that the applicant's Dish Wireless LLC uh request for a special permit under sections six, seven, three, three, B and C and other applicable sections of the bylaw to install as part of the wireless uh telecommunications, telecommunications network. Uh, the following equipment, three antennas, six remote radio units, three junction boxes, three fiber cables and three uh power cables. And the property is located at four sixty Hillside Avenue in the industrial district. Uh, that that be allowed with some caveats that the applicant presented affidavit uh, certifying the structural integrity of its installations. Uh, that, that the, uh, the installation won't interfere with public safety, uh, radio. FCC compliance. So the af, the affidavit is FCC compliance and uh not interfere with the public safety. And the certification would be a stamp engineering certification that the structural So.
Okay. So, so with that additional caveat, that's the motion.
Um, one thing I think we didn't address is your application states there is going to be equipment on the ground.
Yes.
And you need a lease for that?
We have a lease.
You have a lease. So what would be appropriate is to submit a redacted copy of the lease since that is required. And can we discuss a little bit about what's on the ground?
Sure. It's a three by five platform um with just a generator on it. And then the, the equipment will be powered by that. And then I believe Daphne has a copy of the redacted signed pages.
Last page and it was, it doesn't say
You need the full redacted. Okay.
Take out the lease rentals.
Yeah.
Sure.
Those economic terms, we don't need to see that.
Okay.
A landlord tenant term.
We do have a, an LOA in there as well from Ken Shapiro.
Okay. Um. The, but we need that.
Okay.
Um, we can do that. Usually when a provider comes in with the replacement of a generator, uh, we take a look at what those are. Now, do you have any noise?
So the the equipment specs, I believe, are in the construction drawings. So if you look at pages A four, A five and A six, they'll show the equipment details. Mm-hmm. And the cabinet on A four will be what would be the ground equipment.
The, the plinth? Or, or urn?
On the
I don't know what it's called. The urn's cabinet or nest?
Just the, the proposed Dish Wireless Equipment Cabinet.
Okay.
Shown on the bottom half of and top half of A four.
Just looking at the bottom of A six. But that's up on the roof. Got it. Uh, what about the sound and the testing? Um. How it goes on, how frequently those types of issues?
It doesn't make a lot of noise. It's, it's a very low. I mean, we can have another affidavit testifying to that as well, if you'd like, but there's, they're tested before their run, when they're installed. They, they have to be tested per the FCC. So they're within compliance of all that or they're
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, just to ditto that. In other words, often they, the board requests, once it's installed, to do one of those
Then be tested. Okay.
To make sure the equipment operates as intended.
Okay. Understood.
Hours and not in the evenings so that they don't disturb anybody.
How often do you test it? Uh, does it run just for a weekly?
It it's tested as needed. So if we're going to swap out equipment, then it, it would be tested or if we're going to upgrade. So it's not, it's not an all around the clock type thing.
It doesn't go on?
It's not going to kick on and off and, and make loud noises in the middle of the night, if that's what you're asking.
As needed.
Yeah, as needed.
So you'll address that uh in the decision uh that they'll have to submit some sound study that it's in compliance with regs.
Okay.
The generator. Okay? Um. I'd like something also submitted on the generator specifically.
Okay.
With uh these submitted. So you have an affidavit. You have a engineering certification and now you have something to do with it. You can incorporate in the same one. The FCC David can incorporate that for the generator as well. Okay?
Okay.
Questions, anybody?
So we got a motion?
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it, it takes us several weeks to write a decision. We'd like those to reference in the decision. So the sooner you can get those into Daphne, be great.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is an application by Corbin Pietro and Jessica Gelman. Uh, they've applied to the Board of Appeals for variance under general law, chapter forty eight, section ten, four point two, three, and section seven point five, three. And other sections applicable to the zoning bylaw to seek zoning relief to allow side setbacks of no less than fifteen feet where twenty five feet are allowed due to the unusual soil shape of topography of the land. The application is associated with the demolition and reconstruction of an existing non-conforming single family home. The property is located at three twenty Grove Street and it's in the single residence A district. Please introduce yourself, uh, your address and your connection to the application.
Good afternoon, my nee- Good evening. My name is Paul Bolia. I'm with Peel Resources. Uh, we represent the clients at three twenty Grove. Uh, our office is at two eighty one Chestnut Street, Needham, Mass.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gelman. The resident at uh three twenty Grove Street and this is my wife, Corbin. And the kids dancing are, are sons um who are apparently here to party.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So if you would make your presentation, how, address it to the chair. We'll have some questions for you. We'll read into the record any comments that we receive. We'll ask people in the public on or on Zoom if they have any questions for or against. Uh, and then we'll uh hopefully make a decision tonight or we need more time. So we'll, we'll take a look to see how that goes. One, one thing before we start. So it was difficult, if not invasive for me and I think other people to just go walk around your land property.
Okay.
That would have been really helpful and that should be really helpful, that we can actually see what your property looks like and what you're applying for. So one of the suggestions may be to allow that to happen and push this final decision, whatever we do to the next meeting, which is in January. It's on Zoom, so you don't have to come. Um, January eighteenth, I think.
Correct.
So that, I just throw that out. If the board is not interested, if people understand it totally, you're, you're just crystal clear on what, what these plans show us everything. But I just wanted to raise that. Usually we snoop around and like do views and go around houses and
Oh, our house is your house. Make, make yourself at home. And I'm, and I'm also very happy to provide any videos uh from the floodings that we've had to show just I mean, it actually was flooded this week.
Everything that you think helps support your application, you're, you're seeking a variance. So that's a different type of relief. It's saying the zoning bylaw doesn't work for you in a, in a sense. Uh, so anyway, I interrupted.
Um, thank you. Um, so to introduce this site, it's a little bit I mean, as you can imagine, a little unusual. One, it exists in two municipalities. The frontage is in Wellsley on Grove Street. Um, therefore it has no Needham frontage per se. So that's a little bit unusual and a lot that we come for you. Um, additionally, uh, the approach to the building envelope is very narrow. And then the lot widens out, but as it does, we get into um some topography that draws in you know, the wetlands and environmental concerns. Now, the bulk of the lot is across that. However, then you would have to cross the wetlands and enter into more uh encroachment into habitat and things like that. So one of the things that we like to accentuate or focus on here or call your attention to is because of the shape of this lot um being much like a wedge um in the building envelope area between uh the left and right sides, it really as you can see, the existing house sits at fifteen feet off the lot line on the left and twenty feet off the lot line on the right. Um, and tucked all the way back um against the wetlands to the rear. In reconstructing a home that would satisfy the family's needs, they trying to keep in mind the benefits of staying away from the twenty five foot no disturb, getting out of um what we call sensitive jurisdiction of the conservation commission. Um, as a matter of fact, this this structure has already gone through and gotten approval through the conservation commission. Um, so we wanted to make sure that that was okay with them prior to coming to you guys and then addressing the need for relief on the setbacks. Now, the existing house sits at fifteen feet on the left. We um have couched that back to seventeen and a half, trying to be less non-conforming than it was. Um, although again, as you see, pushing this forward to get away from the wetlands that are right behind the home, we ended up coming just a shade closer on the right hand side. Um. But still staying outside that fifteen foot setback had this not triggered a new construction category. So that's really the the two criteria of it being, you know, radical shape issue combined with the topography. As you can see, there's a four and a half acre lot that of that, that four and a half acres, there's a um, as you see the top of the plan, there's such a small bit that falls in that window in which to put the home. And that's why we come before you tonight.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I think just to start for a little bit of perspective, we moved uh to Needham in February of two thousand and thirteen and we had no children. Uh, I was pregnant with our oldest. Uh, the boys are now at Newman. And um, you know, what we love about this property is um, is the, the neat natural habitat uh and what we're able to see deers. Last night coyotes. Uh, but
Chasing deer.
Yeah, exactly. But um, this is uh our home. We love it. Um, we, our, our plan is of course to um raise uh our children here and uh grow old here and um, we both are, will end up being the primary caregivers for both of our parents. And um, so a big part of, of this is to ensure we um can, can support them from a home basis. Um. So I think just to start, we, when we purchased the home, we were unaware of the um water issues in this location. Um, you may or may not be aware of um the, the Needham development of Beard Way and then the subsequent um additional develop, developments on Grove Street. Um, but increasingly there has been more water and flooding. Um, the backyard will oftentimes end up looking like a pond. I mean, it is just uh water. We had not had any issues um with the water coming into our home until uh twenty twenty one, July of twenty twenty one. Um, when we had a very severe flooding in our basement, we had six inches of standing water for several days. Um, we had both um Needham Fire Department, Wellsley um uh Works um and Needham Works involved in it. We had, had previous instances where Uh, Works um, and Needham Works involved in it. We had had previous instances where. The Needham Fire Department had come and helped when there had been flooding in the past, but. Um, you know, I also want to give a big thank you to the Needham Fire Department for. When it became apparent that the water was uh, going to be breaching that night. They uh, were helped us move. Maybe I shouldn't say that. Uh, some of the things from the basement. Um, that would have been destroyed. Um. But you know, obviously that was devastating for us and was um. Created significant mold issues that we had to to um, remedy. Um. And I think just like of note for this, like we have, as I mentioned, an expectation to care for our parents who are both. Um, in their late seventies. Um, and the mold issue um, and concerns and kind of the uh, issues that they. Deal with uh, from an allergic perspective are quite severe. Um, so this was of a lot of our focus and understanding. So we, before deciding to. Um, build a new home, move it forward ten feet. Uh, we did do significant work to look at alternative options, hired um, engineers. To kind of what are the different remedies and. In the work and care that we put into designing this home. Um, again, we did go before conservation four separate times. Um, did came with a plan to address and improve the habitat situation. Um, to ensure that there were not be um, flooding for us. Using the best technology that is out there today, as you can imagine. It is not really sustainable for us to be worrying every time it rains about whether or not we're gonna have flooding in our basement. So, um. You know, I think for us, uh, we felt that this was our only course of action. Uh, um, like I said, we love Needham, we're both active in the town in a variety of ways. I coached. My son's flag football team and soccer teams this fall. Or then um, has coached the the track. Um, so this is a place that we love. Um, this is, you know, a significant investment for us, but one that we feel will be for the overall betterment. Um, of of Needham and uh, the land there. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add.
You got, you got most of it. We're we're happy to answer any questions on why we chose this path. It was after. A lot of analysis and time evaluating what our course, I mean. Our our house is not a tear down. We actually have invested significantly in our house. We love, we love where we live. And so this was after. You know, a lot of thought and pain about what what are our best paths to be able to continue to to raise our family here.
So, as I mentioned, the variance is a high standard. It's difficult. Um, you have to make certain findings.
Yeah, sure. You can ask any question you want. I apologize for interrupting. You're not interrupting me.
Better experts than me in the audience. I'm not sure they need a variance. What you have currently, as I understand it, is. Uh, nonconformities on both sides of the setbacks. And what you're going to do is build a new house that will similarly have nonconformities on both sides of the setbacks. But not create any other new nonconformities. Is that correct?
That was, so that this was the, when we started this process and made the decision that we felt like we needed to build a new home, we had. A conversation with the building inspector and that was exactly the response.
That was the prior building.
That's 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 right. So we're, yeah, we're we're, yeah, we're respecting the guidance that we got and.
No, I I understand.
But we also, when applying. I believe the application indicated both paths because we were a little bit. Unsure whether this would qualify as a special permit for continuing the. Nonconformities. But because it involved demolition of the house.
Right.
And then construction.
Right.
We were unsure whether that would. Uh. Be appropriate. I mean, so it was definitely in that like.
But I.
That Venn diagram.
Right.
Black line of the gray area.
I I, well, my own opinion is that you don't need it there. And so I don't know if anyone else on.
So tell us why?
The cost of and. Again, the learned audience can step in. Uh, the cost within the case of a single family residence. Where you are not creating a new nonconformity. Even if you are increasing existing nonconformities, for instance, on the right side of the house, going from twenty feet to whatever. Seventeen feet. I believe all that you need is a section six finding of substant, no, basically no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. And similarly, under section one, four, six of our bylaw. I think you reach the same result even for a reconstruction. So much as I would love to hear the, so the. Variance analysis. I don't think we need to go there.
So let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Uh, what did the public notice say, first of all?
Variance.
Yeah. So I'm not so sure we go to special.
Well, or other release, I assume.
I say seven five three, which is a special permit.
Okay.
Seven five three.
So talk to me and talk to us, describe basically the discussion with the prior building inspector.
Right.
You had plans.
Okay, I want to correct myself. I apologize. Seven five three is the various. I thought I'd say seven five, so so he doesn't expressly say um. Special permit.
I I only raise it.
Other.
No, no, no. I raised it because we got an opinion of council. That it had to be renoticed. So if they were applying for a special permit and didn't ask for a variance, they needed to. We we. Republish that. That was what the council said.
Our intention was to ask the poll.
I was trying to make a simpler.
I know. Uh, we just had that probably three weeks ago.
Yeah, that was for.
That was, that was the reverse though.
Alright, so so in any event, talk to us briefly about you you applied or were about to apply. There was in in the prior building inspector commissioner said what?
Yeah, so thirteen months ago, we just came to the conclusion that this was our only path forward. Um, we had our engineer, um, was was not Field Resources at the time, it was Metro West and um. Uh, our architect, um, Michael McKay. Go and and talk to the building inspector and ask this exact question, right? They they currently are not conforming, fifteen foot setbacks. What? And he said, yep, fifteen foot setbacks works. That that, you know, and he put together the, yep, that that looks like something that I would approve. And it was go from there. So that was the, that was the, actually the information that made us say like, okay, like, we're doing this. And and sort of.
And then went through the entire process with Concom, you know, and I mean, all of the different elements that.
So conservation. Gave you order conditions on a variance. So how did you make?
No, 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 they.
Yeah, you know, no, no, what I'm saying, they they discussed the variance in their. I just read the order.
They 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 provided feedback on this application.
Their their feedback on that memo is referring to the variance they're applying today, but when they were reviewing the application. All those four.
I get you.
They they did not.
I understand.
Variance aspect.
Yeah, the the Conservation Commission was because our existing home and the new home is within the fifty foot buffer. So they were approving that.
That project.
Yeah, that part of it.
Yeah, and there were adjustments that we made um. From the initial meeting to meet the Concom. Um, requirements.
So Daphne, let me ask you a question. Um. Why wasn't the application including a special permit or variance, or was it focused that they were only applying for variance?
What the application that came, it was unclear, um, because they were demolishing the house. And so our understanding was um, you know, that the house. Um, because it was a new construction, then all the zoning requirements would be required and we. You know, it's, you know what? Here here's the building.
Good point, good point. He's smiling in the back.
Yes, because.
Good evening. You 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 do need a microphone.
Uh, yeah.
So Joe Pranbeck, Building Commissioner. Good to see you again.
Uh, so the dilemma that we ran across, um, when when this application came to my office, myself. Uh, well, it it first went to one of my other inspectors and that inspector had no knowledge of the prior. Conversation uh, that they may have had with with the previous building inspector. Uh. That inspector took it to a second building inspector, uh, and came to the conclusion that it required a variance. They brought it to me and I came to that same conclusion. The reason being in where the confusion comes in. Is table. Four point. You get to in a minute. I'm still learning the bylaw.
It's.
Uh, table four point two point three on page um. One thirty nine, which is a table of dimension required requirements for. Structures created through new construction. And the bylaw says that anytime you demolish more than fifty percent of the structure, it's then considered new construction. So that's how we arrived at the conclusion that.
So loses the real problem nature because it's more than fifty percent. Construction.
Correct. So that was how we arrived at this. I.
I can buy that.
I.
We talked a lot about it.
I would have preferred to go the other route, but but I I thought we were kind of stuck here and 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 I I could not find, really could not find the path that. Previous building inspector used to come to that conclusion.
Do you still think a variance is necessary?
I do.
Okay, so Peter. Um, I'm glad you're here. Uh, clarified something. Um. So, um. We're here before for a variance. So I think we have to. Step back and. Makes sense.
We'll take the special permit if you want to get into that.
You were moving in that direction, but I think, I think uh, this. Should be okay. Um. I'm uh, any any other questions from any member of the board before I get into?
It's not a procedural question. Would notice the butters in Wellesley, obviously.
Yep, that was a good question. Go ahead.
Do we notice the butters in Wellesley?
Yeah, uh, at three oh six Grove Street, there there's that residence is supportive and so are the residents at three thirty Grove Street, the the Harris's.
Do we have anything in writing from them?
The Harris is called in to um, the Concom sharing their support. They were not able to come today. I have a text message that says they're very supportive.
So let me ask you, so what would you think that uh, the the Needham Board? Uh, is would be concerned about what people from Wellesley think about this project?
Well, I think that. Another way to ask the question, do you have to appear for the board in Wellesley?
We do not.
No. I don't think that. What would be, I mean respectfully, what would be of our concern? Uh, my concern is that the neighbors live in the town of Wellesley. Right, but why would this board?
So the the three oh six Grove Street on the the neighboring side on the Wellesley side, we own that property.
They are the butter. So that there is.
How do they feel about it?
I said they're.
We'd recommend that you guys take the time to look at the conservation minute, the tape. But the other butter also chomped in on that hearing about this very.
Yeah, Megan Clint Harris at three thirty.
So so we're we're looking at this uh, site plan, uh, and there's lot numbers. So what lot other lot number do you own?
Three oh six Grove Street.
It's a.
Lot two.
Okay, so you own a lot two.
So let me ask, do you have to appear before the town of Wellesley?
We're not doing any construction in Wellesley. The house is entirely in Needham. And. Ultimately, there will be some work with the town of Wellesley because they rely on utilities to the town of Wellesley. And for that, we'll have to go through their engineering department, but that'll be.
Okay, so uh, let me read some things into the record and uh, any other questions? Board members?
Uh, I can't resist. Uh, the retaining wall.
Uh, I mean, which this is.
The the retaining wall was part of the Conservation Commission. That was a request.
Um, they're under forty.
It's right answer. Okay, we're done.
Yeah.
Testimony from the back row. In any event, um. In any event, um, we have some comments from the Department of Public Works. Uh, they strongly advised to delete the finished basement portion of the project. They're strongly advising. Is there any desire to? Not? Are you gonna retain the basement portion?
We 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 will have another look, um, but it's our anticipation that we we expect to keep the basement.
They said there's no reference to a civil engineering record for the proposed grading or stormwater plan, and you must submit an engineered stormwater plan.
That was, so I think that note was that they looked at justice plan. The stuff, the documents that were submitted to conservation and approved and approved by conservation had full stormwater on them. We reference on this plan. That refer to D E P filing for specific information about stormwater and erosion control. Just because I didn't want to get into. Reciting as this plan is already particularly busy within the area where we're doing the work.
Pretty busy.
As you can imagine, I said, you know, if what things can we cull out of here that the board doesn't need to really do?
You're going to have to go.
We just have to resubmit that when we go for a building permit. Um, to the building department so that the building department can pass that around through engineering and such. Although engineering is already reviewed it, but they'll review their own work.
We got the nod. Thursday night, once a month. Um, and then the proposed proposed plan must include stamp drainage, cow, stormwater plan, system, infrastructure, that's all gonna be. Right, and that's already been filed with.
Very aggressive, yeah. It's very aggressive.
Alright, um. The building inspector is here. He had comments. He just gave us his comments, so I don't have to read your letter. You gave. Verbal testimony, but the police had no issues.
They're like, please stop calling us about water.
And then you have uh, some requirements for the Public Health Division. Uh, they submitted and outlined some of their requirements. For any type of tear down new construction. Uh, fire department approved it. Um, and let's go to the planning board. The planning board had no comment. That's correct, no comment. So, um. At this point, I think I'd open it up to the public. Is anyone here today, uh, tonight have any comments either for or against or support? Or just to be heard on this application?
We have no hands raised in public.
So the Zoom world is uh, silent as well. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and we can deliberate on the application for a variance. Um, one thing that I did suggest and 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 I suppose that. Perhaps with the busy plan. It may be proven, given that it's a variance, if anybody wants to uh. Arrange to come visit the house, walk the land, walk the property and have one of you or someone show us. We don't have to do it as a group. We do that, we have to have a public hearing, a a open meeting uh, notice. Uh, but uh, I just throw that out to members in the board uh, who want to do that on this. Nick Howard and me will be voting on this.
So are you suggesting to delay until there's a site visit?
That's one of the recommendations.
So you you want to get, and rightfully so, to 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 document the. Unusual soil conditions, shape of topography.
We've heard some testimony, uh, we've heard the problems with the site. Uh, but the you the, and you can view something in the plan. But I don't know if we really have a great set. I don't have a rendering. I don't have photographs. You do, you you have all that.
That doesn't really do it for them. The visual value, yeah.
Nick?
I can show you photos from this week that are the backyard weddings. That's.
No, I mean, I I do a buyer property twice. But I didn't want to go into the driveway. I did not know that you that Petro Partners, I probably should have read into what Petro Partners was, but.
That's it.
Pietro Partners.
Pietro, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean. Our neighbor passed away in twenty eighteen, we bought the house.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so I think what what John is alluding to, and I couldn't agree with him anymore, is that this board historically, and even though. I was the junior guy, I'm the second junior person here. Um. You know, the variance. Is a really big ask of the board, obviously, right? Uh, which I think is why everybody would have preferred. The not do a variance. That being said. I care a little bit less about walking a lot, knowing that. You are the direct the butter to the left. Um, and then the property. At three oh two, which is two lots over. I mean, they're clearly quite a ways away. From you.
That house is for sale if you want to wander around that.
I like I like living in Needham, not in Wellesley.
Yeah, same, same.
And then obviously, you know, there's purportedly written. Support from the Harris family, that's it. The other side. I mean, I personally would like to walk the property. Uh, but I I think I can be swayed. Either way. On whether or not that's a requirement. Well, to me, the fact that the neighbors don't oppose it or may even favor it, that doesn't address the issue of soil conditions and shape of the law. So I think. Walking it would 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 great.
Well, here's the if you wanna.
A lot of water, so you you're obviously putting the house away from the water.
So as we move it away from the water, the lot is it gets smaller and smaller. So that's part of the. It's like you, it's like you save yourself from the water, but then you have no place to build, sort of the way our lot is. What's that?
Skidding rink in the winter.
That's that's exactly.
So you're not concerned about a basement with all this water? You've been ten feet away?
I have a good like comparable of with and without if that's opposed to.
Look, so I raised the issue. Um, we have to make specific findings and um. Yeah, we see the configuration. And I read the conservation report. So I'll leave it to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I I think there's a I I I'm in support of the site visit to to get a feel for the.
How difficult is that for you in your planning? You're doing this a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
If we get out there and and allow us to. It would mean a meeting when? January eighteenth on Zoom. And then. And then. Then a decision. Then write up decision at twenty one way. We're talking March. Talking March. Probably end of February, early March. Pulling a demo.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Probably pull. Demo.
Yeah, we, I mean, we 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 applied for the. Building permit, I think. Yeah, we, I mean, we, we've been ready for this from a Conservation Commission perspective and. You know, we we because our the house that we rented next door became available, we've moved there.
Think we're generally supportive of what you're trying to do. With it was a special permit, I think you probably would be done. The the issues are that the facts are really not presented to us. Uh, and evidentiary, uh, I looked at your phone, but that's about it. That's that's just my perspective. Uh, I listened to other members and to say, Peter, what do you think? You got your hiking boots? You wanna go?
I'm not I'm not voting, but I don't think there's the need to say the side.
Okay.
Between the the, what I think is very unusual shape of the lot, the fact that the Concom has made it clear. They don't want them to build on the other side of the grove. What you're forced into building is in this trying. And we have not seen a lot of triangular laws.
One.
So I I think it is. Pretty unique. I don't think that it's a common. Configuration in the zoning industry, so.
Got it.
But if you wanted, put on your boots, go ahead.
Anybody else? Thoughts? Everybody I think there have been.
Yeah, I. And it might be helpful to visit um to get a better understanding. I did the Google geography, trying to get an idea of it, but um it's hard, hard to get a sense.
I don't think I care much about the soil. And all that, I think Peter. Pointing out that in my time here, I haven't seen a triangle a lot before in my personal practice. I don't think I've seen a triangle a lot.
I know when you've seen.
I mean. Again, I I think the variance is such a high threshold, so I. Be persuaded either way. So it's interesting, you that video um was revealing of a lot of water. Which is an unusual uh soil condition topography. But it's not an evidence. It it is it possible to uh. Come home uh after the meeting or something submitted?
Submit the.
Video. That that highlights some of the.
Absolutely. I mean, like also just like, here's what it looks like normally. You can see. This is a photo of the same.
Well, one thing you will notice that is in evidence on the plan, there is a line of the limit of flooding. As dated um. Look at the.
So looking at the site.
This this line that comes all around.
So let's do a picture first, sir, and then we'll get to that. Both are very important.
We got aging eyes here.
Mine is mine are starting to go as well.
Speed for that side.
No, that's um, that's our fire.
That's a fire pit, that's a fire pit underwater.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, they clearly have excessive water.
Well, because it's wetlands, that's the. That's the.
And and so excessive water, Peter, would you uh incur would be a uh unusual soil condition?
Yeah, but I I I also would think the fact that the Concom has said pretty clearly, we're not gonna let you build on the other side of the bridge.
And they gave him a order of conditions to build.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way they're they're building anyplace.
And not located with these plants.
So it seems to me that if you can submit what your these videos that you're showing us with 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 heavy water. To me, that would be very helpful and 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 uh. So I I guess I I can defer uh uh the a site visit. If if we can get the videos submitted, maybe create still pictures on how you do that.
I think pictures would probably be better uh rather. I don't know if we have a way of archiving videos.
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. So um. I I at the at this particular point personally, um, I really like, I can. During in windows and especially during dinner, um, I I I can I can give that one up. So at this particular point. I'll entertain a motion if people are not interested in putting this off for a month and go hiking through their property and seeing. I think Peter made a very valid argument. We have a triangular lot. Uh, we had granted a variance on another triangular lot. We we did. Uh, well, it was sort of triangular. Um, and the topography is. Messy and tough and difficult, and so there's two standards. An unusual soil condition, shape or topography of the land or structuring question. And as a result of one of those circumstances, little enforcement of the zoning by law by law would result in substantial hardship to the applicant. So substantial hardship isn't economic, so uh we've had discussions what substantial hardship is. Uh, it's the ability to use, enjoy uh the property. Uh, you've pushed been pushed by the Conservation Commission or. Delegated to a particular area. Uh, it seems to me that what we're varying from is de minimis, in my opinion. Uh, it probably would cover be permitted under subs- a special permit, but for the new construction. Um, and so I I'm inclined to proceed without a site visit uh on this. So at this point. We've closed the public hearing. There's no comments. No one's opposed for it. We've had some very instructive. Uh. Insight into why a variance is needed or special permit is not possible, I'd entertain a motion. And and doing the motion, please, we have to make some findings.
Yeah. So. Never done a motion for a variance, so bear with me here. Putting forth a motion for the applicants. For variance under M G L forty A section ten. And then our zoning bylaws four point two three, section seven point five three, and any other applicable section therefore. For these variants for the purposes of the side setbacks and not meeting twenty five feet. Due to the unusual soil shape or topography of the land.
And?
The property located at. Oh, and for the property locator through twenty Grove Street, Needham, Mass, in the single residence A district.
And the result of these circumstances, little enforcement of the zoning by law would result in a substantial hardship.
And the result of these circumstances, literal enforcement of the zoning by law.
With what conditions?
Natural hardship with the conditions of having. The some photographs or. Put into the record as well.
Showing flooding, showing. Topography, showing whatever.
Yeah, the the photographs that were presented tonight would just be submitted.
And then it'll be conditioned upon you submitting to the building inspector, building commissioner. Uh, all the requirements for the uh stormwater management that you've. Had put into the conservation. But you're gonna have a separate package for that. Um, any other thoughts? So there is a motion. I'd entertain a second of the motion.
Second of the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It's eight thirty one. We're going to take a four minute recess. Do you go to the Newman School? That's all. Take a four minute break. Andrew the gobbles. Here you go.
Very much.
Take your congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody here news beat? Okay, we can get started and uh the sixteen eighty eight Central Ave. Oh. Who stepped out, Peter?
He wants his four minutes.
But you can still step, it's okay. Thank you, I didn't realize it was. Peter, we're about to start without you. I didn't realize that you. Got a lot of writing to do, so we want you here. Okay, welcome. Good evening. Uh, we're gonna reconvene the the zoning hearing. Uh, this is the eight o'clock uh. Application by sixteen eighty eight Central Ave. Uh, I just want to read for the record quickly, the public notice. That the holiday Clark, Greg Darish and Robert Demas, Matthew and Nicole Hyman. Carl Johansson and and Peter Lyons, Elaine Sullivan, the applicants applied. Uh, to the Board of Appeals. Uh, to appeal the. Building inspector's decision. Uh, of the permit, uh, P C B C twenty three uh uh a hundred seventy nine issued. Uh, to Matt Barelli and the Needham Enterprise LLC. Uh, dated September nineteenth, two thousand twenty three for the construction. Of a childcare facility. Uh, the the appellant concludes that the building permit. Plans on file do not demonstrate the that the construction. Alteration or use as proposed complies with the zoning bylaws as limited. By the Dover Amendment. Uh, M G L forty A section three. This property is located at sixteen eighty eight Central Street, Needham, Mass. In the single residence A district. Um, before we get started, um, I just want to sort of recap. There was a lot of. Uh, uh, people, lawyers and 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 concerned citizens who spoke, and we appreciate those comments. We're very sensitive. Uh, to the concern that this project has raised. Um. Uh, so just to to refocus here, this is an appeal of the building permits uh uh issuance, the building permit that was issued. Uh, for uh the ten thousand square foot daycare facility. I I just want to preface the this meeting tonight um. To say that that the zoning board, that our our jurisdiction on appeal. Of a building inspector's decision is limited. Uh, this is not a special permit hearing. Uh, it's not a variance hearing. Uh, and so we are restricted uh by the bylaws, there's the need and bylaw. Uh, this childcare project uh uh is protected by the Dover Amendment under. Uh, M G L forty eighth section three. Uh, but it does permit the town to apply reasonable regulations. Uh, concerning the bulk height of the structures and determining the yard sizes, the lot area setbacks, open space parking. And also building coverage requirements. Uh, so the the applicant is arguing that the project violates specific regulations contained in the zoning bylaw. And the board will consider. Uh, those those concerns regarding the bulk. Height. Uh, yard size, lot area setback, open space. Parking and building coverage that is allowed. Uh, by the uh but by the the Dover Amendment. So we're restricted. This is not a normal special permit context. Uh, if 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 these conditions do fall within these categories that are are permitted for the board to review. The board will consider whether that specific provision of the bylaw. Is reasonable as applied to the childcare facility. As I said earlier, this is an appeal of the building commissioners uh uh building permit. It's not a a variance hearing, it's not a special permit hearing. Uh, and the board does not uh possess the ability to place conditions. On the project because of that. So again, this is a narrow confine that this board, and we're just one board. There there are other forms certainly. Uh, but we're here tonight in front of the zoning board. If an appeal, in an appeal, if the project does comply with the bylaws, the the board has no discretion. Uh, to deny or revoke the permit. Uh, the board's review is limited to determine whether the project complies with the zoning bylaws. Um. Just a few 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 notes on on the on the exchange tonight, um. Uh, there's a lot of material, and I know people are deeply concerned, and we are as well as board members. Um. Tonight, there there's uh that there's additional written comments that I will read or summarize into the record. Um. And so what we're going to do tonight is to to reopen the public hearing. Uh, to receive additional comments from anyone who has not been heard before. And we respectfully ask that you keep the comments to to three or four, five minutes. Uh, uh, and we appreciate the, we all are polite to each other. We have a level of decorum. We know this is important to everybody. But we just want to make sure it proceeds in in a professional and appropriate way. But we just want to make sure it proceeds in a professional and appropriate way. Uh, what most likely will happen tonight is that we will. Uh, after entertaining, uh, additional public comments. And hearing from the respective lawyers and the building commissioner. Uh, 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 we will then close the public hearing, and as a board tonight, we will deliberate. We don't intend to make a decision tonight, but we do intend to have a a public deliberation. So that that's the quick overview, I just thought it'd be helpful to put things in context. So that being said, um, the 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 public here is now reopened. And anyone in the public who would like to have a comment who hasn't already been heard. Okay, Mr. Sockel, please.
Thank you, Eric, thank you for that.
I'm honored for it, if you might, sitting in front of a microphone and just identifying.
Sure, thank, thank, thank for the overview, um. I do have some comments, want to make these comments because this is a public meeting, I think that, uh. Some of the things I want to share, cover the entire process, and hopefully they're helpful for whoever is a decision makers in the process. Uh, yep, sure, I'll provide that. So, uh, my name is Eric Sockel, I live at three twenty four Country Way. Um, I have lived. In the town of Needham for fifty six, um, consecutive years. Uh, when I was growing up in Needham, my parents, Ron and Lois, were extremely active as volunteers in multiple positions as well. Uh, in many elected positions of the town. Uh, collectively, they held elected office for over a hundred years. And, uh, my mother, uh, is still very active in elected positions in the town in her nineties. Uh, Needham is an outstanding town. And, uh, like many municipalities, outstanding municipalities, what makes it outstanding is not only. The efforts and dedication of elected officials and volunteers. But the processes that are put in place in towns, processes, uh, checks and balances committees. And it's extremely important that, uh, elected officials and volunteers or anyone involved in the process. That their focus is always on what is the best for the town, we we. We as citizens, we hope that is what occurs. Uh, there probably are some legalities to that, but just hopefully people are are. Are doing things to do the right thing, as they say. Um, over the last eighteen months or so. Uh, there have been hundreds of very concerned residents of Needham in regards to this development. At sixteen eighty eight Central Ave. Uh, there have been ranges of concerns from the size of the building to the setback of the building. To the changing stories of, uh, what is going to be done with existing structures on the building. To what are the future plans of the land behind the proposed development? And and most concerning. To whether or not the developer or the town hopefully. Is going to ensure the safety. Of the children that may end up there someday, it is known. That there has been hazardous waste on that property for decades, it's been documented. And, um, let's not forget that our most vulnerable residents are children. Whether an elected official or not elected official, we all have a responsibility. To ensure their safety and it is unclear. That that property is going through the process to ensure that. I I think everybody knows that the developer is an individual. Who has held, um. A select, a board of selecting position for a decade or so, and during this process, this process of many approvals and boards. Um, was even chair of the select body. Uh, let it be known, I am a very pro developer, I think that everyone has the right to develop. Um, but I think what's very important is that all the checks and balances are in place. And so, you know, I would challenge all elected, appointed, anybody. Associate of the town in Needham that is involved in the approval process. To look in the mirror, to look in their children's eyes and just ask the very simple question. Have, has the, all the parties involved unequivocally. Treated the current developer no different than they would. From a developer that had no relationship with the town. And if the answer to that simple question is yes, I commend you, I thank you. If anyone involved in this decision process associated with the town does not feel that that answer is unequivocally yes. Then shame on you. Shame on what this could cause the town, in my opinion. This development has the potential. To have the most detrimental impact to the town in my fifty six years here. And I'm speaking because if the process is done properly, if people are treated under the normal checks and balances, I have no problem. But I think there are a lot of people that are residents of the town. That not only in the face, does it look like there may be some issues, but in reality. Possibly some corner slip. And that is what I want to make sure happens, and whatever happens, happens, but that is. An issue that must be understood and appreciated by all the people making the decisions. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sockel. Uh, anyone else that could be heard, please? Mr. Nate, address.
Uh, good evening, my name's, uh, Stanley Keller, uh, three twenty five Country Way, so I'm an affected. Uh, neighbor who's been interested in this project, uh, from the very, very beginning. What I want to do is try to summarize a few of the comments that have have been made before. Without getting into detail and without getting into. Legalism, I happen to be a lawyer, but I'm not a land. Uh, use lawyer, uh, happily. Uh, but I am a corporate governance lawyer, and I do advise boards of directors, and one piece of advice I give. Uh, to really pick up on what, uh, Eric Sockel said. Is that when you have a conflict of interest. Uh, an interested party transaction, it's especially important. To touch all the bases. To take care. To be independent, uh, and to make sure every base is touched, that process. Is extremely important, I think we can say that the planning board. Met that standard. Um, the decision was appealed. Uh, um, the land court came down with a ruling. That ruling is now the subject of appeal. By the abudders, not by the town, and it frankly to me. It is inexplicable and it has been unexplained why the town, one did not file a notice of appeal. And in fact, did not appeal at all. Uh, hiding behind, if you will. Without making clear what the thought process was, um, the exception to the open meeting law for matters in litigation. And all of that really raises questions about the integrity of the town, and this is a town. With an important, significant reputation that that all of us have have. Pride it ourselves in. And I think it's now this board's responsibility. To look at this project within your authority, I agree with that. Uh, from an independent, careful perspective. As really those who need to uphold the integrity of the town, this isn't about. Whether or not a childcare center gets built. It's really about what are the reasonable restrictions consistent with our town bylaws, zoning bylaws. That are permissible under the Dover Amendment. One, we have a court decision. Which frankly, I think was wrong, and that'll be tested on appeal. That proceeding is still pending. So in a way, the planning board decision is still out there. With their reasonable restrictions consistent with the town by bylaws. Uh, and we'll see. And therefore, really, the granting of the building permit at this time was premature. And I think the board has authority to recognize that. Second, looking at, this issue has been raised before. Consistent with the town bylaws. You can't have. Two, two, uh, structures. Uh, on this property. Unless it's ancillary. We've heard a lot about the barn. I refer to the barn as the Trojan horse. The only issue with the barn, it's there, it's being fought over. Which is to prevent setback. A the reasonable setback and compromise setback that the planning board. Uh, determined, preserve the barn. Therefore, to keep the property from having to be set back too far. The reason for it, and let's be candid. Is to preserve the ability to develop the back lot, so I think you need to look hard. At the question of. Are we really dealing with an ancillary? Building, or does it violate the town zoning bylaws? We've had the saga of the town. Uh, of the barn, if you will, uh, through this whole period. And now we finally settled, the developer has settled on it. Uh, for storage for the childcare facility. Do we really believe that? It's there, sure, you can put some things in it, but do we really think that this new structure? This childcare center that was carefully developed and planned. When they planned it, that they did not plan it for sufficient storage? It's an excuse. And let's be candid about it, it really is not an ancillary facility, and I can assure you. Or I'm willing to place money on it, that that barn will not be there after a couple of years. Has anybody looked at the lease or the term sheet? For a lease? See who has control of that barn? Is that really being leased for a long term childcare facility? Or is the developer retaining the rights to it? That'll be a tip off as to whether or not. You're dealing with an answer, something ancillary or just really the Trojan horse. Uh, uh, to protect. The back lot of this property for for future development. So I think those are all things that this zoning board needs to take into account. Really having in mind. There is your responsibility to preserve the integrity. Uh, of, uh, of this town that we all love, thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Uh, other comments, it's the back, please. Good evening, you can state your name, please, and your address.
Um, Carol Sullivan. Bravo four Greendale Avenue. And I lived in Needham my entire life. And born in Needham, and I am the executive director of Needham Children's Center. I'm here to, tonight, on speaking on behalf of the Needham Children's Center. Our staff, our children and our families, and the thousands of Needham residents, we have faithfully served over the last forty three years. We are pleased that the land court's decision allows this important project to move forward. In an order to continue serving children in a facility that would be. Tailored specifically for them. We are not just building a building, we are creating an environment where our local children can thrive in their early years. Sixteen eighty eight. Is designed using the most current research. And the outdoor spaces encompasses the natural environment, including mature trees. And sixteen eighty eight is a space where children can create, create foundations which serve to nurture their life skills. Our world is ever changing. And it's our children who are going to be navigating our world. Our mission and overall philosophy speaks to these early years and the difference. Their environment, environments of discovery and play can make. Look carefully. At this appeal from the few of the abudders. There is nothing new here. These items have been fully addressed and rejected so many times. First, the planning board, and then the land court. After a full trial, these arguments were rejected. It has now been three years, three years. The land court ruled that the project was eligible for a building permit. And the building officials have reviewed and agreed that it was in fact lawful. For the building commission to issue the permit. Now, these few abudders have come to the ZBA to try to have you believe. That the court and these highly qualified town officials are wrong. This has gone on long enough. These constant stalling tactics. Have cost endless amount of money all around, including the Needham taxpayers. And have hurt many in the process. Each time it has been found that there is no legal basis. Which to delay this project any further, and then still they try. The original opening date of sixteen eighty eight was October twenty twenty three. Massachusetts currently is facing a crisis in available childcare. In Needham is no exception. Families who need quality childcare in town have been placed on our waiting list. And some are on hold for over a year. As the timeline continues to delay, families won't even look. Families won't even longer still for the care they truly need in order to work. And establish their quality childcare connection with this town. I can add that we are already using the barn for storage. As our available square footage has dropped significantly since until sixteen eighty eight. Welcomes us in, so families continue to be severely impacted and storage is now at a critical point. The town of Needham has hired professionals in their respective fields with the highest of credentials. Every one of them agrees with the building inspector. Commissioner, the records speak for themselves, it's now time for the heads of the Needham Fire Department. The Police Department, the Board of Health. The Needham Building Commissioner to be supported in their decision. To allow construction at this site. So NCC may continue to provide quality care for the children of Needham. And fa- families starting today and for many years to come. We ask the ZBA members to follow its mandate. In accordance with the bylaws. Of the town and see these tactics for, see these tactics from a few what they really are. We have all been waiting patiently, patiently for over three years. We respectfully ask that the board uphold the building commissioner's decision without delay. Thank you.
So thank you so much, let me ask a question, clearly there's people concerned about what's being stored in the barn. I think you said things are being stored today, can you elaborate on what's being stored in the barn and what would be stored in the future? As relates to the, uh, the school, the daycare facility?
Well, we have buggies that seats six children, buggies for children.
Okay.
Um, we have, currently, we have bookcases. We have water tables, um, sand tables, it's equipment children use that aren't always kept in the classroom. Um, we have blocks, we have all kinds of. Stuff that we do not have space to, um, in our current space anymore to, um, hold them.
Oh, that's okay, so what, okay, okay, so we've got one minute, one at a time, okay, so no, thank you for addressing the question, and and if your colleague would want to be here.
Yeah.
Any other questions, please, yes?
I I understand you, I guess you're in transition now.
Right.
When you move into the new facility at sixteen eighty eight, what do you anticipate storing in the barn?
Currently, a lot of the same stuff we're storing now.
Okay.
You know, and probably other things.
And and you may or may not know, uh, but. Is there a lease in place? For the facility, do you know?
I'm not, um, I do, we have not signed a lease.
Okay, and and are you familiar with the negotiations at all?
I am, but I am more of the silent partner on that part.
Okay.
My, my other, my business partner is the one who's been dealing with that.
I I just have one question, which you may or may not be free to answer, is the barn included in the lease premises?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yes, please. Good evening, just please state your name and your address.
Uh, thank you. Um, my name is Patricia Falco, F A L C A O. I live at nineteen Pine Street. I'm a forty year Needham resident and prior elected town official. But that's not particularly immediately relevant to these deliberations, but just for you to know that I am well anchored in the town. So three issues. A large venture capital corporation. Dedicated to maximizing investor return. Who purchased three point five acres. Well below market rates. And not allowing toxic material testing on what is known hazardous waste dump. Who impose a large commercial building. Into a one acre residential zoning neighborhood. Already overloaded with rush hour traffic on a one lane road each way. No shoulders and only one sided sidewalk. So the leader of this large venture capital corporation. Um, who is dedicated to investing. Maximizing investor rate of return. Happens to be a third generation chair of the Needham Board of Select Persons who directly or indirectly. Holds lifelong influence over the hiring, firing. Jobs and pension security of municipal employees who sign off permits and inspections. So is this an open question that we're looking at a classic case of small town corruption and bullying? With elected officials abusing the power of their office? With elected officials abusing the power of their office? This is an open question among residents in our neighborhood. And next you have an architect's design and placement of a large commercial building. That is out of character for the neighborhood setbacks. And is so resistant to common sense. Reasonable setbacks. That causes many neighbors to think. That the owners might already know that there is a lot of hazardous materials on this dump site. That would not be compatible with the daycare center. So that this would remove their excuse and their disguise for placing a large. Commercial residential building effectively in our faces. In this residential one-acre zoning. And lastly. What reassurances are there? That a daycare lease would be protected in perpetuity? By a venture capital company whose obligation to their investors is to maximize their rate of return? We beg your understanding of these three issues. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Other public comments, please?
Yeah, I just wanted.
Come on up, come on up. We'll have you get comfortable, please, your name and your address.
My name is Suzanne Tejo. I'm the executive director at Needham Children's Center. And I just wanted to say the lease has been signed. We have a lease with the builder.
Okay, could you, could you just describe very generally, you know, tell us the rent certainly, but the duration of the lease?
Um, fifteen years. And, um, what else do you want to know? I mean, it's just a general like.
Obviously, you, some of the concerns about the lease, so, you know, in addition to the duration.
It includes the barn?
Yeah, there's, there's talk of the barn and lease. And we do have storage in there currently. And I will speak to the storage we use in the current location that we have. It, I can't, we have explained all of that to the planning board back. I don't know, three years ago or two years ago. Um, and it was extensively explained exactly how much storage we currently use in the space that we're in.
If you could, this, 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 this allow us to, to tell us now, this is a different form, what, what that might be?
Okay, so we occupy, um, a two-car garage currently with bikes, um.
So the existing daycare is using storage that has bikes and some other things and?
Yeah, so the exists, our existing daycare right now, we have a two-car garage that has bikes, um, outdoor equipment in the winter. What's stored in there is, um. Um, water tables, stuff we use in the summer, so we can continue using that year after year. Because if it had to stay outside, it would get ruined. Um, we have. One, two, um, three, four, I mean. Four or five different storage, um. Closets, I'd say, kind of in the space in the church itself that we use for storage. That could be, um, art supplies. Um, it will carry all of our, um. Kind of paper towels, toilet paper, that kind of stuff that we have to store in the bathrooms, cleaning supplies, janitorial supplies, um. And then we can go into classroom materials, um. Any kind of tables that might be not, you like furniture that's not being used. Um, needs a place to be because we're ever-changing our classrooms, so. All that needs a place to be. Um, we have an infant program and two toddler rooms, so with that comes, um, buggies, strollers, um. You know. Anything, I mean, tons of, I don't know what else to tell you.
No, no, you give us a lot of, a, a, a lot of things, so I appreciate that. You clarified the issue about a written lease, a fifteen-year duration.
Yep.
So I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir. Name and address.
Sure. Thank you. Um, my name is Pete Lyons. I live at sixteen eighty-nine Central Ave. So directly across from the proposed daycare center. Um, clearly, given the location of my home, this is deeply personal to me in terms of the impact that it will have on my life and my family's life. Um, having this facility across the street and, um, you know, over the course of the last three years. Lots of deliberation around all the concerns that you have heard. Um, I will share that my concerns center primarily on the setback of the property and the bulk and the height of it. Um, I've been very concerned since the day I received a note from Matt saying that there was being demolished, um, you know, several years ago. Um, that concern has only increased since we have now seen the foundation laid. Which is very close to the street. Not to mention, from Central Ave looking at it, it looks to be five to six feet above the ground level. So it concerns me that A, it's that close, but B, that it seems to be that high. That, um, we will be looking at, but not to mention what's going to happen with all the water that's going to run off that, um, with the foundation that high. Um, in addition to, um, the concerns about the bulk of it, the placement of the building on the property. Um, contributes to the traffic concerns that I think I and all of the residents of the neighborhood. Have voiced over, um, the deliberations of this, of this project. Um, because of where it is, the driveway can't be as long as we would like it to be. And, um, believe that the traffic will back up, um, and the traffic is already a significant issue. Um, I will tell you that even since the project started, I think November sixth was the date that the house was knocked down. Um, getting out of my driveway has become extraordinarily difficult only with the construction vehicles. That are going in and out of that property all day long. Um, I've asked the board to, to, you know, seriously consider the impact of this on the neighborhood. On the quality of my life, on my property value. Um, in trying to enforce reasonable regulation as to what this property should look like. With respect to the barn, um, I agree with all the statements that were made earlier. I continue to be confused as to why a brand-new ten thousand square foot building. Needs an accessory building of four thousand square feet to store what was just shared with you. Um, to date, my office, home office looks out on the property. I haven't seen anything in there except Matt's boat going in and out of that barn. Um, finally, I will say, you know, we're very concerned about the impact that this has on our neighborhood. Um, we've already seen that in the last six weeks. Um, several times, construction has started before it was supposed to. It has continued late into the night. Several times, I've had dump trucks sitting in that driveway with lights shining into my home. Which is only a precursor to all of the cars that will be coming in and out of that property and the light shining on my home. And I don't understand what the landscape plan will look like and what mitigating factors will be put in place. To, to minimize the impact on, on all of us who live there. And especially me who lives across the street. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you as well. Just a little bit of, of the traffic. So you mentioned it's this construction, those heavy trucks. I live not far away. What's, what's going on?
I've been cut off twice by the dump trucks pulling out right in front of me in the last week and a half. The trucks are going in and out. They come and they block the street as they back the equipment in and out of, and cause a tremendous amount of traffic. And that's only with construction going. Um, not to mention, I'll say, you know, they don't shut the gate at night, so the construction site is open. Half of the fence for the construction site has fallen down, has not been put back up. So the respect for our neighborhood already, and I realize the school has said, you know, we want to work with the neighbors. We haven't seen that yet, and it's only been since November sixth.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, any other comments, please? Oh, so this, any, any other public, this woman, okay, thank you. Come on up. Mr. Sacco, I mean to catch you up, but we have some public decorum. Okay, thank you, sir. If you can tell us your name.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Toronto Flores. I'm the attorney for the Needham's Children's Center. I submitted a letter to you, uh, earlier this week. Um, and I just, I, I don't want to belabor the points in my letter. Um, I was asked to address the procedural anomalies that, uh, we found with the application. And my letter is kind of, uh, divided into three separate categories. Um, the first being the untimely nature of the appeal from the building permit. Uh, the second being the lack of appeal altogether from the building commissioner's, uh, November first enforcement denial letter. Um, and the third, uh, being the category that you, you touched on a bit at the opening. Uh, Mr. Chairman, regarding, um, putting aside those, uh, procedural anomalies, if you get to the merits. Um, where the scope and, um, extent of this hearing, uh, needs to be focused. And, and, uh, how the board's, uh, review here is limited both by, uh, state and local law. Um, uh, just, just briefly with regard to the, um, uh, those three issues. The, uh, appeal of the building permit, as I outlined in my letter. Uh, is, is undertaken under, uh, chapter forty-eight, sections eight and fifteen. Um, and, and your local bylaw, section seven point five point one, uh, requires a thirty-day appeal period. This is jurisdictional, the case law that I cited in my letter. Um, I, I've litigated in the land court. Um, this, this board, like a court is out of jurisdiction if, if the appeal is not timely filed. Um, the application form, uh, and, and presumably filing fee was not filed until October twenty-third. Uh, that was, uh, four days after, uh, the thirty-day deadline. Um, under, under the case law, this is, uh, fatal to the application. Um, I did read Attorney Sanders' response, um, where he talks about it, the concern being form over substance. Um, and, and that the, the notice of appeal that he filed, if not the application form. Uh, did conform with the requirements of, of the statutory scheme set forth in chapter forty-eight, which he, um. Uh, properly characterized as a comprehensive scheme. Uh, that is true, but part of that comprehensive scheme under forty-eight is section twelve that mandates this board. Uh, promulgate rules regarding the procedures that, uh, that people must follow to follow those appeals. Uh, and so your own rules are part of that comprehensive statutory scheme. Uh, the case law that he cited in his letter, Elio versus ZBA, uh, of Barnstable states. Um, regarding the comprehensive, uh, scheme that we have previously observed the importance of adhering strictly to the framework. Established by such a comprehensive scheme. Your, your framework makes very, very clear that the, um, uh. Application form itself is the, the salient document that needs to be filed within that thirty-day period. And any communication purporting to be, uh, an application, appeal, or petition, uh, is, is treated merely as a notice of intention. And, uh, the, the application itself is not deemed complete until, um. The application form is filed and the filing fee is paid. Um, so that, um, would, in my view, render this, um, board without jurisdiction to hear this building, uh, permit appeal. Um, secondarily, I think it is also significant that they, uh, did not appeal the building commissioner's determination. Um, their, their letter, uh, specifically requested, that was filed within the thirty days, uh, requested that he take enforcement. Um, and presumably that was done under section seven because they were raising zoning issues that are within your purview, as you outlined at the beginning. Um, and that they weren't covered under the site plan review, um, decision that the, that the planning board already rendered. And this would be properly in front of you. That statutory scheme does require steps that you go through, and your own bylaw requires steps that are, that, that. An applicant must follow in order to exhaust the administrative remedies before they can get here. And that step is appealing the building commissioner's decision within thirty days. Um, and they, they have never done that here. Um, the, the, the failure to exhaust the administrative remedies means that the building commissioner's decision. As the zoning enforcement officer in this town, um, and your bylaw seven point two point one. Charges him with that responsibility. He must look at zoning and make that initial zoning determination as part of the building permit application process. Um, if that, that, that enforcement, um, decision is not appealed within the thirty days, it becomes final. It is the final word of this town. Um, and in consequence, those additional, um, zoning claims that they're raising outside the scope of the site plan review. Uh, are also not in front of you right now because his decision is final and they didn't timely appeal. Um, again, I, I know, I think that I was called persnickety, Dylan, thank you. Um, persnickety. He called me persnickety and precious in, in, in raising what he claimed were form over substance. Um, arguments and, and, uh, Dylan and I, uh, have, have a good relationship and I, I respect him a lot. But, um, they're, they're not, they're not persnickety regulations. They are part of that comprehensive scheme. Uh, chapter forty-eight and the statutory requirements are very strict that these appeal processes and administrative remedies and processes. Must be followed, um, before this board can, uh, rule. Um, and finally, my third category, um, which is probably, I think, most important for you tonight. And particularly in light of your opening remarks where you defined, uh, the limited scope and nature of this board's review. Um, I, I separated, um, the, the claims of the appellant into three categories themselves. Um, and the first three, and their numbers, one, three, and four of their letter. Uh, concerned the land court decision and the idea that this, um, uh, building permit being issued and, and is premature. And I think a, a prior witness, um, o- opine that he felt it was premature as well. While the, uh, land court decision is being appealed to the Massachusetts Appeals Court. Um, and that, I, I, I think there are a number of lawyers in the room, and we can all, who are litigators at least, tell you that's not how the statutory. Um, or appellate process works. Um, no court ordered stay is in place. Uh, that land court decision is the final word, um, and it governs the law of this case unless and until it is overturned by the appeals court. With no save judgment in effect, the building commissioner was, uh, fully, uh, lawfully entitled, uh, to act on that building permit application. And it does not serve as a bar to the issuance of that building permit. The second category of, um, claims, uh, did, uh, raise some zoning issues. Uh, that are within this, uh, board's purview. Um, and, 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 and those that weren't already covered by the site plan review process. Um, however, every single one of the claims that are raised in that notice of appeal were, um, also the subject of the enforcement request letter that they wrote. Uh, to the building commissioner, and he has rendered his opinion, and I, I direct you to that opinion because of a lot of the comments tonight. Um, were, were, uh, in reference to specifics. Um, regarding, for example, the, the setback from the front, uh, front, uh, yard setback. Um, the, the dimensional and bulk requirements that this, uh, that are applicable to this particular project. Are met in this instance, and they are detailed in, uh, the zoning, uh, in the building commissioner's, uh, enforcement letter. Um, he takes great pains and.
Is that the November one letter?
It is a November one letter, and I have to say, I've, I've, I've been doing this for thirty years and, and all I do is land use. Um, and I've represented towns and I've represented building commissioners, and I think that this is probably the most thoughtful. Um, enforcement letter, uh, that I've, that I've read in terms of its detail, its attention to detail and how he. Um, very, very specifically addresses every single one, uh, of the claims raised and indicates why. Um, uh, uh, under this, this, um, particular project. Uh, and this limited scope of, because it's a Dover amended protected project, uh, which zoning provisions apply. Um, why it complies with the ones that are applicable. Uh, and, and why the other ones are either governed by the land court decision. Uh, or are matters outside, uh, zoning, and that's my third category. Um, of substantive comments in my letter at the very, very end. Um, comment numbers, um, I think six, nine, ten. Um, were, uh, involving, uh, matters that were, uh, unrelated to zoning. Um, they're, they're not covered, uh, in site, site plan review, and certainly this hazardous waste. Um, allegation, which is a chapter twenty-one E, uh, concern and is governed by a whole set of, uh, different regulations and state agencies. Um, uh, they, they have jurisdiction over these claims, not, not your board. Um, and so, uh, in my letter, at, towards the end, I do address every single one of the, uh, claims that were raised and why. Um, you, you know, in addition to the untimeliness and lack of appeal. Um, of the building commissioner's enforcement letter, this board also, because of its limited jurisdiction. Um, can't, can't properly review these at these time. Um, and, and finally, I just want to close and I think, um, touch on something that Carolyn, uh, said in, in her, her letter. Um, you know, that, that they've been waiting three years to provide very badly needed, uh, daycare in, in the town of Needham. I know you, I've heard a lot of different people, um, express their love for this community. And I, and I think that that is heartfelt, and you're listening to a lot of that love be expressed tonight and, and a lot of very, very concerned folks. Um, however, the, the, the process that has governed us here unfortunately is legal. And it's not, um, governed by passion, it's got to be governed by the law. And in this instance, you have a highly credentialed, really experienced building commissioner, uh, who has rendered a very, very careful decision. Uh, under both the zoning bylaw and the building permit. Um, he has, uh, that, that decision, uh, was backed by your fire department, your DPW director, the health agent and planning board. Um, all indicated they had no further comments. Um, at, at this juncture, I think it is time to close the hearing. Um, and, and vote in favor of your, um, professional staff. Uh, who, who are experts in their own, um, uh, areas of expertise and, and, and should be relied upon. It's an extraordinary measure for this board to vote to overturn a building commissioner's, um, uh, determination. And in addition to the procedural, uh, grounds that are outlined in my letter, I don't believe that the substance is here either. So with that, I think I will end, and thank you for your time.
Any comments? Any comments?
Thanks.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else, please? Okay, so counsel, uh, before we get to counsel, definitely counsel have, uh, uh, words. At both counsel, Mr. Sacco wants to come back? Okay.
Just want to say real quickly.
Okay, Mr. Sacco.
First of all, um, all of my children went to Needham, uh, childcare. Have phenomenal facility. I don't think any of the complaints or the issues should. Have phenomenal facility. I don't think any of the complaints or the issues, should I say, that were brought up by a Butters residence of Town Needham have anything to do with childcare. We love childcare. We want childhood ben. All of our issues have to do with the developer's development. For example, you could have a wonderful childcare if it was set back sixty feet or ninety feet. It's a three and a half acre lot. Three and a half acres. So
Okay, so we we don't want to do is
No, I'm not gonna do that. I just want to touch a couple of points. I just want to touch a couple of points. So no one is against the childcare. So the wonderful childcare setback is these closest. The idea of testing the soil is something that anyone who cares about childcare, the childcare attending is something to do. Storage. It's a ten thousand square foot building. They didn't build a basement. If you build a basement, you have wonderful storage without it. Why did he not build a basement? There this whole issue is not about the childcare. That's all I want to emphasize, is that it's all about the structure and the and the intended in of design in the back. When they put a forty B up there, which they're going to do. Okay? Then it's going to be a whole nother issue. So I want to be very clear, we love the childcare. My my kids went to that childcare.
You made that very clear, Mr. Saco.
But the setback has nothing to do with quality childcare. And the not having a basement and design, which would give you much better storage than an old barn you have to walk to. There's a reason he didn't put a basement in.
Thank you, Mr. Saco. Thank you. No, I point point will take it and and note it for the record.
Yeah, sorry.
Before we get to the attorneys, any other comments from the public hub from the the Zoom? Any Zoom listeners who would like to weigh in? Any public comments?
We have no hands raised.
Okay. All right. So why don't we proceed with counsel? Please come, Mr. Huber.
As the board knows, my name is Evans Huber. I'm counsel for Needham Enterprises. I'd like to respond to some of the comments that were made by members of the public, which I think some of them I think are actually fairly offensive comments. There was an allegation in the guise of a concern that this town, these various board members are corrupt or that they have been corrupted by Mr. Barelli's previous service on the
Excuse me, sir, I did not make an allegation.
No, no, please, please. Okay. No, no, please, I'm gonna I'm gonna ask you to stop. So I I started this meeting with my comments about being polite and decorum. So counsel has the floor, you've had the floor, he wasn't interrupting you, so I'd ask you to to quiet, please. Respectfully, respectfully. Please continue, sir.
All right. Well, let's take your current characterization that it's an open question whether or not the members of these various town boards are corrupt or have been corrupted by Mr. Barelli's position as a member of the select board. It's hard to know how to respond to that sort of an allegation, but I would point out that with respect to this particular project, Mr. Barelli is no longer a member of the select board. He resigned. This is a person who has given an incredible amount of his time to this town on a volunteer basis, not just as a member of the select board, but in 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 many other ways that he has contributed to the town. And and the reason that he chose not to run again was because of the vehemence with which he was accused of various kinds of improper activity. But in any event, he's no longer in a position to, you know, control the salaries of people who might be making decisions here, and he hasn't been in that position for several years. Mr. Socal said that he had no problem with this process as long as the developer, Mr. Barelli, was treated the same as anybody else, that was treated at the same as if you know, he hadn't been a member of the select board, for example. I think it's fair to say that Mr. Barelli was treated far worse than many developers in his position would have been. We went through a more than one year planning board process for site plan review and a special permit. Then we had to go through a year and a half of litigation in which included, for example, three months arguing over whether or not what had happened in front of the planning board was a special permit. This was an argument that Mr. Barelli, among many others, had to pay to overcome. It's an argument that the court found completely meritless. And the entire litigation, you know, as you can imagine, you're all attorneys, you have, you can get a sense of how much he had to pay to get to where he is today. I think it's abundantly clear that Mr. Barelli has not been given any special favors. He hasn't been allowed to take any shortcuts. This this hit the treatment that he got, in my opinion, the treatment that he got in front of the planning board was egregious in terms of the level of conditions that that the planning board attempted to impose on a Dover amendment use. Including, by the way, conditions that town council told the planning board they couldn't impose, but they went ahead and did it anyway. Another gentleman got up to you, got up here and said, are we really to believe that the barn is actually to be used for storage? That gentleman was not at the trial. That gentleman is not Mark Glusing, who designed this building, who testified at the trial. He's not Pat Day, who testified at the trial. Pat Day testified, and these people testified under oath. Pat Day testified that the that the Needham Children's Center is currently using approximately eighteen hundred and fifty square feet of storage. There's not anything remotely like that amount of storage in the floor plan of the building that's being designed. Mr. Glusing testified that the reason for that is that it was assumed from day one that the barn would be available for storage. So if you look at the floor plan, if you listen to the testimony under oath of the architect and of the head of the Needham Children's Center, you would know that the barn is intended to be used for storage. That's what it's going to be used for, for the Needham Children's Center. It's not a subterfuge for some other plan. It was intentionally designed, the building was intentionally designed to have a certain amount of space for the various kinds of activities that Needham Children's Center wants to and facilities that Needham Children's Center wants to provide to its children. It was designed with a significant amount of input from Pat Day, the head of the Needham Children's Center, because of the the kind of facility that she wants it to be for for the children. If we had to include eighteen hundred and fifty feet of storage, the building would have been eighteen hundred and fifty feet larger. Neither Mr. Barelli nor Pat Day saw any reason to make the new building any larger when there was an existing barn on the property that could perfectly well serve the storage needs. With respect to the issue that I think, Mr. Goldman, you have correctly identified it for this board to consider, which is is there any does the issuance of this building permit in any way violate the zoning bylaws, the zoning bylaws, not the town's general bylaws? You have correctly identified that that is the scope of what you're entitled to consider tonight. They have, they have they the appellants here have alleged that the building permit violates the zoning bylaws in various ways. Uh, I'm not going to take up your time by reiterating the arguments that I made in my letter to you, but I did try to address each one of those alleged violations of the zoning bylaw in my letter. And I would ask before you make your determination that you look at those arguments. If you have any doubt about them, ask town council, what his opinion is about them. But I would submit to you that there's nothing in this building permit that violates the applicable zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Sanders, would you like to have the last word? And then, of course, the building inspector as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just please identify yourself.
Dylan Sanders, representing the appellant. And let me thank the members of the board, staff for your time and consideration of this appeal as well as the the tone and words about decorum that and the the tone that you've set. So I applaud you on that. It's not easy in this day and age and with a passionate issue like this, so I want to recognize that. First, let me respond to a set of arguments by my colleague, and I hope I can call her my friend. I've known her for a long time. Attorney Sarah Trenna Flores, reasonable attorneys. I think, are you all attorneys? I you know, reasonable attorneys can differ differ strongly. On this occasion, I differ strongly with Sarah, and I don't mean to leave Evans out. I have the greatest respect for Evans too, though I've not known him as long. Oh, I'm going to. But first, let me respond to Trenna, Mr. Trenna Flores's arguments. And and you have my responsive letter, so I'm not going to say anything new, so I'll just touch on them briefly. I was happy to hear that we complied with the statutory scheme. So I think that should be the end of the matter. The statutory scheme requires us to file a notice of appeal within thirty days of the issuance of the building permit. We did that. There there is no debate that we sent what we called a notice of appeal stating the basis of that appeal as required by the statute within thirty days. The statute doesn't require us to use any particular form. All it requires us to do is send it to the town clerk and then subsequently send it to the building inspector, which we did a timestamped copy as well as to this board, which we did through Ms. Collins. So I think that's the end of the the timing matter. The statute covers what is required. Local administrative rules are laudable. And you are free to adopt them, but you are not free to apply them in a manner which deprives a a right of appeal guaranteed by the statute. With respect to the lack of appeal of the building inspector's November first decision, I admit, we have not appealed that particular written decision. The statutes and the case law says we do not need to. If we have been given an appeal and if we have appealed the building permit, which we are concerned about, that's what we did. So we haven't pursued that avenue of appeal. The case law is clear. I cited the case laws in my response that that is simply an alternative method if you do not have notice of a building permit having been issued within that thirty days. We did have notice. We acted on that notice. So that's the avenue of appeal we've chosen to pursue. The Ms. Trenna Flores touched on, and this gets back to your opening words here tonight, that this board is a a a board of limited jurisdiction, and so that an appellate, such as where we need to identify issues which claims in which the building permit, the project that's been permitted, does not comply with the zoning bylaw. And I'll get to that in a moment, but first I want to respond to the characterization that there is somehow somehow there's been too much process or abundant process for this project. There has been abundant process by the planning board, most notably. But the problem is, you know, that that process has been thrown out. The problem is, the building permit has been issued without the the benefit of the conditions that the planning board sought to impose. The planning board who held hours and hours and hours of hearing, you've heard complaints about that from from some, you've heard stories about it from others. But that's the process that took place. That's the the process that attempted to balance the concerns of the neighborhood, the concerns of the town at large with the applicant's rights and the applicant's wishes, the wishes of Needham Childcare. That's the process that tried to balance them all. That's where the process, the project was conditioned. All that has been thrown out. So the I I hear the developer and the applicant in Needham Childcare saying, there's been too much process. But the problem is, that process had been set aside by the court. And so we're asking you here to revisit that process. You are a a body of limited jurisdiction. So why doesn't this why is the building, why shouldn't the building permit have been issued? First of all, I've said it in the beginning, you've heard it here from some others tonight. The building permit was premature. The project is definitely still under appeal. My clients have an appeal pending in the appeals court. The appeals court has said that the the outcome of that appeal may be a retry of the issues having to do with the site plan. So that is still an open question. That is why this, the building permit in the first place was premature. Second reason, the building permit, the project as permitted does not comply with the bylaw. The bylaw requires site plan approval. It requires an approved site plan. That's a simple statement, and we all know why we're not talking about it. Because the land court set it aside, annulled it. But it doesn't get around the fact that the bylaw requires an approved site plan. So we are entitled to appeal the building permit, and the court said we are entitled to appeal the building permit on the grounds that it does not have an approved site plan. We are doing so, very much so. I don't, I said in the beginning, when I talked to you, whatever it was, three or three or four weeks ago, I don't expect you to flaunt the land court decision. But you were not parties to the land court. My clients, the appealing parties, were not clients to the land court action. We tried to be. We're trying to be still. But we are not bound by that land court decision. You'll have to rely on town council as to whether you are, but it doesn't get around the fact that this project under the bylaw needs an approved site plan. There are argue, we can argue about whether that's precluded by the Dover amendment. I have my argument. Mr. Huber has his. But it doesn't have an approved site plan, and I want to be clear that that's one of the grounds of our appeal.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. When you say appeal, you're talking about the appeal of the land court decision to an appellate court?
That's one of our grounds for appealing the building permit to you. You know, we've said it and we've said it in our appeal.
So the appeal to this board. Of course, of course, as you know, that there is a another form of an appeal, no matter what happens in this decision. My suspicion is somebody will appeal it to a higher court, to a court.
I I I would put all my chips on that 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 bet, no matter it's whether it's Mr. Huber or myself.
Correct.
So welcome to the party. But yes, but when I say that's one of the grounds of our appeal, it is what I'm saying is one of our reasons for arguing to this court of limited jurisdiction and to this body of limited jurisdiction, as you say, why it doesn't require, why the project is permitted, doesn't comply with the bylaw is it doesn't have an approved site plan because that site plan has been annulled. And as I say, the site plan was the process, the very, very lengthy process by which everyone was heard. The the planning board attempted to balance everyone's interest. And let me remind you, because some comments that were made earlier seem to suggest that my clients are simply NIMBYist and represent a minority. I believe you're aware of the depth of feeling in the community. I won't dwell on that. But let me remind you again, when the planning board decision came out, it wasn't my clients who appealed. My clients were content, I'll put it that way. They were content to live with the decision as it was conditioned by the planning board, as it was conditioned by that public process. Then, when the developer appealed and attempted to set aside that site plan decision, attempted to set aside those conditions which had been imposed to balance the community's interests, to balance the which had been imposed to balance the community's interests, to balance the residents' interests, to balance the applicant's interest, to balance all those, that's when my my clients first tried to intervene in the land court action, being unsuccessful. That's why they're here now. And as I say, the land court said you you will, the one of the reasons the land court gave for not letting them in the land court action is you're going to be able to appeal the building permit, for among other reasons, they don't have a site plan. I won't dwell on the other reasons that we've given. You you've heard from the 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 appellants themselves. You have our letters. I will leave you with a couple of other issues. You've heard tonight that there are some construction management issues. I would urge you to take those very, very seriously. The building commissioner will tell you, he's received calls complaining about the way that this construction has been conducted. And one of the grounds of our appeal, it has been that there was no comprehensive construction management pla- plan in place. I think events have demonstrated why there needs to be a comprehensive construction management plan in place. And I would urge the the board to require that immediately to account for these problems in the current construction. Whether they are the parking of concrete trucks, the idling of construction trucks near and in front of of neighbors' driveways, the hours that are construction are taking place, complaints about dust, all of these issues we predicted would happen, they are happening. These are facts on the ground. The building commissioner can tell you, he's been getting complaints. I think that these and other issues justify not only the board when it takes up this matter to deliberate revoking or suspending the building permit, but for stopping work altogether right now, immediately. I'm going to leave you with this written summary. I'll give it to Mr. Huber as well of our requests and the grounds for them. I can, I can give it to.
Give multiple copies?
I did. Thank you.
Make sure Brother Council has one.
I I said so.
One more copy? We'll get later, okay? You submitted three copies tonight?
I did.
Okay, so sir, this is your request of things that you want.
Put it succinctly, yes. Thank you, Your Honor.
I understood. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate you. The building commissioner, would you like the last word, sir?
Good evening, board members. Joe Grandek, building commissioner. I think the only thing I'd like to address is the concerns that that people have for undue influence over, at least my department. I've been a building inspector for thirty seven years. I've worked in three other municipalities and 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 under the direction of numerous town managers and various politicians. There is absolutely, so I came to Needham six months ago. I do not know Mr. Borelli. I've not known Mr. Borelli. I don't know anyone in Needham, quite frankly. And I I and I intend to.
I hope you have a long career.
Yeah, and I just want to say that that I have no allegiance to Mr. Borelli. My office, my staff has no allegiance to to Mr. Borelli. I've not been asked by any of my superiors to give any sort of deference to to Mr. Borelli. And I just want to make that clear, that that is not happening within the operation of the building department in town of Needham, nor will it ever happen under my direction.
I appreciate you qualify, I appreciate you saying that unequivocally. I do have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
That we've heard tonight, concerns today, ongoing regarding construction, trucks idling, coming too early, leaving too late, lights, no construction management plan. I understand, and it's like you articulate that the that you as the building commissioner is the enforcement agent.
Correct.
So I imagine this audience would like to hear your your views on what's going on and what might be done.
So there there was an incident, the 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 biggest incident that I heard of was that on on a particular day, I believe it was about the twenty seventh of November, the concrete trucks were backed up on the roadway at night. It worked until about nine thirty. Our general bylaw limits construction noise to eight P M.
Eight P M?
Yes. Actually, I thought it was seven as well, but it but it's but it's actually eight o'clock. I did clarify that in the bylaw, and I'm.
Certainly, essential, a busy road.
Yeah, so I went out the next day. I I went and I confronted, not confronted, but I I spoke to Mr. Borelli right away. That was the result of a concrete truck breaking down in the middle of the placement of the concrete. So it wasn't as though they were intending to work to those hours. I have the trucks back up on the street, had the had the pump that pumps the concrete into the forms not broken down, then it would have been one truck at a time. One goes out, when the other comes in, there wouldn't have been a backup. So I did feel that it, his explanation was sufficient. It was a one-time event. There is always, in my experience over the years, that even with construction management plans, I am constantly called to address or have addressed certain violations of whatever conditions are imposed. And so
So that that's support for people to hear that that you are ready, willing, and able. How how would people get, if people do have complaints, and I think we've heard a few, what should they do? Who should they call?
They should call my office right away, if I'm not there. You know, they can leave me a message. This is something that we jump on right away, without a doubt. And I I had another conversation with Mr. Borelli today and and told him that he needs to tighten this up, make absolutely sure that he's not, not just not starting before seven in the morning, but not having, what happens often on a construction site is a certain equipment will come, you know, it'll get delivered at six thirty in the morning, or maybe the operators of the equipment will show up at six thirty and they'll start the vehicles. I've made it absolutely clear to him that that cannot happen. Seven o'clock is your start time, eight o'clock is your finish time. The one bigger incident was the result of a substantial breakdown of a piece of.
Understood. And I think another issue that came up i- is the the barn, that we've heard some testimony from the good folks at the school that for storage that, but there's concern the of what may happen, what could happen, or some alternative views. So can you address that?
And I and I think we did address this in the last hearing as well. Any, if if there is, so it's been made clear to the developer, and I assume he's, it's been transmitted to the daycare center. The barn can be used only for storage accessory to the daycare center. If there is in fact a boat upstairs from Mr. Borelli, I will tell him, his personal boat, he'll have to remove it. There is a enforcement process where I if typically what we do when we have a violation, we go out, we speak to the violator. If they don't address the violation, we put it in writing. If they don't address, after it's been put in writing, we have the ability to take them to court and get an enforcement order.
So the enforcement, I don't mean to 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 beat this too much, but so the enforcement order would be something to the effect of if if it's not removed, or is it shut down? What what would an enforcement order look like in this context?
It would be a a cease and desist of whatever use was not accessory accessory to the daycare center.
Okay, fair enough. Do you have other questions? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So in the absence of any other public comments, and appreciate the lawyers and the commissioner providing comments as well, I do want to read the additional comments that came in, or certainly to summarize those. And I'd like to start with the letter from Timothy McDonald, who is the Needham Department of, he's the director of the Needham Department of Health and Human Services. Because I asked him, I asked the department about the concerns that was addressed and made public tonight, here again in the previous meeting, regarding the the soil test and what might be done and what they could do and what he's seen. So I want to read this. The Public Health Division and the Board of Health will provide no further official comments on this application. This is Timothy's writing to 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 the board. I only add that the Public Health Division approved a septic permit for the property on Monday, the twentieth of November. The Board of Health was informed of the pending application, did not hear, did hear an informal presentation from concerned neighbors on November seventeenth, but chose to take no action. In its September meeting, the Board of Health had an extensive discussion about public health, legal and regulatory powers, and under which circumstances the protection of the public health trumps something like personal property rights. The gist of the discussion was that if the Board of Health was to intervene using its regulatory powers, it would do so based upon documentation and evidence, like Massachusetts D E P reports or environmental spill notifications, or official write-ups from the Needham Fire or Public Health Departments about on-scene investigations of chemical exposures, not based upon anecdotal reports or old photographs. It's the board's discussion with two legal experts that were included in the minutes which are available, imagined and and public, to say that they they have, the 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 Public Health Department, in its opinion, has vetted this issue. This was very important to me. It's more important to most of the people in the room that are standing in in opposition to this, that they're saying that there's been no reports by the Mass D E P. There's been no evidence of environmental spills, or no official write-ups from the the Needham Fire Department as would occur if there were spills. So this is the town's health official weighing in. I think it's important that we all hear that, and I was deeply concerned about it, but this is what he's he's telling us. We all heard about the letter from counsel from Nutter. And she explained the letter eloquently, so it's no reason to elaborate further. Of course, counsel in opposition submitted his extensive piece and had a chance today to give further explanation. In addition, we have comments from concerned citizens, Meredith Freed, on December twelfth, December twelfth. Yeah, she wanted to express strong concern that the building has commenced. It seems to be well underway. And she's certainly concerned, and she's urging that the board, this board takes action. We also heard in writing from Alan Lenzger, likes to formally communicate that the daycare should be actively, construction be paused until the there could be a further legal action. Mike Conley weighed in on December eighth in writing, indicating that the, he's been following this 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 ongoing legal battle for many years. And he's heard various issues and concerns. But he's advising the the planning, us, the zoning board, excuse me, that our jurisdiction is a limited one, and that the issues that have been raised by some of the concerned citizens are beyond the scope of the zoning bylaw. Robert Damasi wrote on December eleventh that he feels that the the developer is blatantly disregarding bylaws. And he's he's concerned about the trucks that were idling, which I think has been addressed in in his overall, not in favor of of this application. I think I've covered all of them. Have I missed any? Daphne?
From Ms. Brusie regarding the Board of Health, Z B A powers, and the Dover Amendment pertaining to childcare.
Okay, thank you for the additional ones. Okay, so what we've done tonight is heard from additional people, heard from counsel, heard from the building commissioner, no other people who wanted to speak, were not able to speak. So everyone who wanted to speak, I believe, has spoken, and the comments are important. And I I know people are very concerned about this project, deeply concerned. And there's been opinions from the school as well about the need of of the town for daycare. And certainly the the concerns of the neighbors throughout. So I think we've heard a very clear feel for how people concerned, and this has raised a lot of concern on both sides. But that having been said, that I think, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Absolutely. Okay, is there a second? Okay, that being said, all in favor of closing the public hearing? But I, okay, so now the public hearing is officially closed. It is ten o'clock. And so we we all have work tomorrow. We are at the end of the day here volunteers, but let's spend some time talking to each other in public regarding what we've heard. Who would like to start?
I I'll start if you want. At first, I I want to thank everyone for the the thoughtful and fulsome submissions. They've really been very helpful. And we actually have read them all. First, I've read them several times. I particularly want to thank whoever on the appellate team provided the copies of cases, because that was really helpful to be able to read the cases. But I do appreciate that. I I think that you know, we're all in agreement, as Howard stated at the the opening, that there are a lot of issues that have been raised here. We certainly understand that there was lengthy planning board process, lengthy land court process, but we really are, for better or worse, narrowly focused in this forum here, and and I I think Howard may have stated it most succinctly, which is basically, is there a violation of the provision of our zoning bylaw that's applicable to this project within the contours of the Dover Amendment? And I personally also think within the contours of the land court decision, such that we should revoke the building permit. And I I think that's that's the lens through which we have to try to filter everything that we've read and and heard. I think I don't know whether we want to to focus on that, Howard, or whether, you know, there there's some, you know, for instance, the issues that Sarah raised and and this whole issue of whether this entire proceeding is premature. I don't know whether we want to deal with those, A, at all, and B, whether deal with them first, or or deal with the more substantive zoning matters, and then kind of loop back to, do we actually have jurisdiction to do this? I defer to.
Well, I have got the utmost respect, Peter, in your legal prowess, even though you recently retired as a real estate board. I I think we should start with, I mean, firstly, as a substantive analysis, and then come back with the procedural issues.
And and this is just my take on it, and I apologize. I have have some detailed notes because there's been a lot of information. And it's the only way I can keep it straight. So the the first point, I I guess, that I come to is the the whole issue of section three point two point one of the zoning bylaw, and the more than one non-residential building or use, not a lot. And we without making any value judgments or anything, I understand there's been a lot of history on the barn and whether it was in the project, out of the project, who was going to use it, who was going to have access to it. I'm very glad that at least we seem to have gotten a clear answer tonight, that A, it's in the project, and and B, the children's center is going to use it. So I I feel a little less constrained by the two years or three years of prior history than in terms of of evaluating that. The the bottom line is, I I think, in my own opinion, that so long as the barn is used for a purpose accessory to the childcare facility, I think it has the same protection via the Dover Amendment from the the prohibition in section three two one. And therefore, I think it could continue to exist on the progress. Again, with the very important caveat that that protection would extend only so long as it's used. For basically a purpose, whether and whatever word you want to use. I'm not trying to be hyper technical, accessory incidental, whatever. To the childcare facility being conducted in the big building. That kind of leads to the issue of can the barn be an accessory building? Uh, in in the the, a- again, without going into the history of 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 how it's been characterized or treated. Uh, I think, and and frankly, I have to tell you, there's there's some value toward not having been part of that. Because we're kind of looking at this fresh, and and yes, I suppose we only know what you tell us. And and what we're able to glean on our own, but we don't have a lot of that history. Uh, so we we, it's easier for us to view it through this narrow lens of of where's there a zoning violation, and if there isn't one, we're done. Uh, I I don't have an issue again, so long as barn is being used. For a purpose incidental to the the. Childcare facility, and I'm not sure what the parameters of that are. I think storage clearly is. I think you, there's been some question, what if you put. Solar panels on the roof? Is that enough to make it an accessory structure? I don't know, but. Hearing that it's going to be used for storage for the childcare facility. I think that that's sufficient under our bylaw to characterize the barn as an accessory building. Again, I I think that that protection is going to disappear should the barn be used by anyone else, whether with the children's center or not. Or be used for any other purpose. And and I think one thing to to make clear, and frankly, I I I saw that in in some ways, uh, the prior building commissioner. Reached that same conclusion. Uh, that if the barn is used specifically for a childcare facility, that it would be a permitted use and not a zoning violation, right? That that's where I come out there. Again, to to pick up on on what the building commissioner said. Should that change? First of all, the building commissioner is not out there. I I mean, there's no zoning police. So i- if the community identifies that there's other things going on there, you report it to the building commissioner, easily enforcement officer. But based on the facts that I see now, that's where I would come down in the legal analysis, that the barn is protected. The issue that's been raised about how the the zoning bylaw requires a plot plan that shows the existing and intended use of each building. I guess I was a little surprised that that wasn't done, but. Uh, the you know. The developer has has been pretty clear that the barn is going to be used, what the barn is going to be used for as part of this project. And I understand that that seems to have morphed over time in some people's minds. But again, buttressed by the fact that apparently there's a signed lease that includes the barn. I'm willing to accept for today that the barn is going to be used for storage. Uh, so I, the fact that it wasn't identified on the plan submitting with the the to the building department doesn't trouble me, and frankly. If no construction was being proposed at the barn, I don't know. That ordinarily, anyone would have shown anything about the barn, but you would be more familiar with that than I. The issue of the stormwater management and erosion control plan. Yeah, I I think, you know, as a legal matter, I don't think that those. Apply here again for the the scope of the Dover Amendment, as you articulated, it's reasonable regulations, and I can read them again. We've all heard them a hundred times. Uh, bulk and height of structures, yard size, lot area, setback, open space, parking and building coverage. Nothing about the stormwater management and erosion control in that list. Notwithstanding that, apparently though, the building commissioner has said that an adequate stormwater. Management plan has been submitted, and the engineering department said an adequate erosion control plan has been submitted. So I. Don't think that's the grounds on which to revoke the building permit. Landscape plan. Uh, you, we spend a lot of time here on a lot of projects talking about landscaping, because it is so important to the waters. Uh. I I understand that the landscape plan is not typically part of a building. Department submission. It doesn't sound like one was filed here. Uh, I sort of wish that it was, but again, looking through the Dover Amendment lens. I don't think that the bylaw provision dealing with the landscape plan is something that can be applied to this facility. I encourage the developer voluntarily to do that, but. I don't think that's grounds for revoking the building permit. Uh, parking, uh, I think that. In in my tenure here, the the formula that Mister Huber outlined in his letters, the formula that we've used. To determine parking requirements for childcare facilities. And using that formula, the parking is sufficient. The building commissioner reached the same conclusion. So I don't see. Parking as a basis for revoking the building permit. Uh. Some of the other points, and again, I'm 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 speaking now of of zoning bylaw provisions that have been raised as not being. In compliance with. The the building permit is not initially in compliance with, I'm saying it badly, uh. Some of the general design requirements under section five point three, uh. Viewed through the Dover Amendment lens, I don't think that those are applicable to this. The, so I I think the fact that they have not been addressed in the in the package, I don't think is grounds for revoking the building permit. With respect to the construction management plan, uh, you know, I I. I think the building commissioner had a a. Reasonable approach to that, that, uh, first of all, none is required by our bylaw, and second of all. You know, he's going to be on top of it, and to the extent that there are construction management issues of which he's informed. They will be attended to. Again, he's not out there looking. You have to bring them to his attention, and if you do, he's saying they'll pay attention to them. That's not a grounds for revoking the building permit because we don't require in the zoning bylaw. So that's where I am trying to to match up, based on all the submissions that we've seen. What possible grounds there would be in the four corners of the zoning bylaw. Is modified by the Dover Amendment and is modified by the land court case. To revoke the building permit, and I haven't yet seen a compelling case for that. There are other issues that I can get into, but perhaps we should just stop there and and you folks give your thoughts on.
Yeah, I think that was very eloquently stated, and thank you for going through that point by point. I won't belabor the issues because it's. Getting late and I don't want to, um, repeat, um, everything you said. I guess the few points. Um, that that I had about, um, the barn, um, I I think. Based on the current use and all we can really look at is how it's being used today or proposed to be used today. As storage and that storage kind of being ancillary to the daycare facility, um, I I do agree that. We can only look at what's being proposed, you know, what we're being told. If. At some point in the future, it's no longer used in that way. It seems that there is an avenue for the appellants. Um, to bring this matter up to the building inspector, uh, the commissioner, and to discuss that that point. So while that, um. Seems to be an issue of of high concern for, um, especially tonight, um, it seems like that is not, um. Something that we can really weigh in today, um, based on what we're being told, um, as a violation on that use. Um. I would also add, just reading the case of Petrucci, um. A- about the uses in some ways similar with, um, a barn there that was, um. Uh, actually, uh, not within the setbacks and, um, you know, even there, that case comes out as a. Allowing, um, the non-conforming use to continue to exist, um, and here. Um, to to kind of try to apply that case to the situation, it seems like it's a barn that is at least within the setbacks. Um, so I think that is, um, you know, if the case law, um, is any illustration, I think it it kind of tends to go in the favor. Um, that a barn can be an accessory used to a daycare, um. On, um. The landscape plans, I think, from the previous meeting, um, it seems to actually be, um. A matter where both parties seem to, um, you know, to at least, um, have some common understanding about. Um, the landscape plan that would be put in, um, it's not part of the application. And, um, you know, it's not, I I think to go back to where we started the meeting where, um, Acting Chair Goldman said. That we can't, um, put any conditions on, um. On the application or on on the, um. Uh, on the appeal, we can only accept or deny, and so we can't go back and add. Um, the landscape, even though it seems like maybe there's some agreement around what's going to be done around the landscaping, so. Um, I just wanted to put that out there as something that, um, kind of is as a consideration that went through my mind initially and then. Um, it seems like that is not, um. Something we can really do, but also, um, it doesn't seem that that is, um. Based on the definition of Dover Amendment, I think it it's questionable whether, you know, the landscape plan would come in within, you know, the the open space. Um, and whether, you know, that would really be defined in that way. So I think that's kind of some of my thoughts, but.
Okay, well, thank you for sharing those, and I I really did what what both of you have said. And and I I I I would add, and I'm troubled by. The traffic concern. And, uh, troubled by it's a busy road, uh, construction is is one element. It's why you have students. Uh, getting on on and off the parents, you know, i- i- it 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 seems like it may be chaotic. But I don't believe, and so. If this was a special permit, the board can and often and always imposes restrictions. And the traffic analysis would be one of those, and how to deal with that, and the board would have power to deal with that. But I said in the introductory remarks that 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 the zoning board is is a board of limited jurisdiction. And I know people don't want to hear that, but but, um. The planning board had a lot of specific details, had a bunch of determinations, public hearings, and and had some conditions, a lot of conditions. But as I understand it, the land court, uh, acknowledge that decision. So I don't believe that the board has the, despite my concerns about traffic. And how it's going to work, uh, on that busy road, uh, uh, during rush hour. I have concerns, I I will say that, but, um, we're we're constricted, uh, to to, we don't have the ability to add conditions. And I know in the prime school, frying, uh, franchising, uh, versus the town of Natick. Uh, Prime Rose Two, the second time around, that. There there was, um. Uh, 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 a, uh, 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 there was a left turn restriction on the Route twenty seven at that time. But the difference there was that was a special permit hearing. That in in that case, the Natick zoning board did impose restrictions on access and traffic. But that was in the context of a special permit. This is not a special permit. Um, so I I feel restricted in that regard, um. I think Peter has done a good job to really walk through the 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 different elements of of the zoning board, uh, the bylaw to. Walk through. How it doesn't appear to be violations, uh, and I just would say in 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 including tonight that. In order for the board, the commissioner's decision to be overturned, we must act unanimously. We have to be in a complete agreement. So. I would say that's a smattering of what we're thinking, uh, we, uh, I I I would entertain a motion to, uh, uh, have the decision. Uh, part of this continued to our next meeting, which is, uh, December, uh, January eighteenth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, so so that, uh, is there a motion to continue this hearing, uh, for for final deliberation? On the decision to January eighteenth at the next meeting, which will be held on Zoom. Is there a, is there a motion?
I love that, boy. No one to finish tonight. Uh, sure.
Okay, second to that motion, okay, and I all in favor of of continuing the hearing for final deliberation of the decision to the. January eighteenth, the meeting, all in favor, say aye. Uh, okay, so, uh. I appreciate all of you coming tonight. Uh, there's been a lot of. Deep concern on both sides, uh, and advocacy on both sides. I appreciate the decorum, uh, that we've had tonight, uh, at a very contested, uh, project. So at this point, I'm going to conclude the meeting, and thank you all for coming, and hopefully we'll see you on the eighteen, uh, the eighteenth of January. Okay, thank you very much.